Everybody, welcome to Wednesdays at Madison. We're going to start tonight, and we might get finished a little bit early. So this is your night to ask all your questions and give some really good comments because we've got plenty of time to do it. But before we get into this great Name of God, let's open with a word of prayer. Father God, we just come to you tonight, just loving you and praising you for who you are. You are our glorious Father, and we do not take that for granted. Lord, we come tonight just worshiping at your feet, knowing who you are. We've been learning so much about your names and how they teach us your character and your attributes, and because of those names, Lord, we get to know you in a deeper, more intimate way. And help us to take all of these things that we've learned and carve them into our heart and to use them from day to day, Lord God, because you do love us and you do want a close relationship with us, and we thank you for that. Lord, we've all had things going on in our lives, and we just pray right now that you would settle our hearts and minds, send your Holy Spirit to be our teacher and to help us learn what you would have us know about your proper name. There are many things going on in this world, Lord, many prayer requests, people facing surgery, illness, all kinds of catastrophic events. And Father, we just lift up those that we love and those that we know are suffering to you and just pray that whatever our friends and family are going through, Lord, that you would just give them the grace and the faith to stand in who you are, Lord. May they feel your comfort and peace through whatever it is. And Father, we're just grateful to be in a church that lets us study the Word. Not everyone has that opportunity, and this is something that we should not take for granted. So thank you for this church. Thank you for our staff and our pastors that revere you, Lord God, and hold up your word as the special revelation that it is, Father. So just continue to bless our church family as we seek to be disciples who truly love you, Lord Jesus. It's in your most holy name that we ask, amen. Okay, we're doing a Name of God tonight, which Kay Arthur calls in her book "The Self-Existent One," and this is the proper Name of God, the divine Name. All of the names that we've been learning are names that show us God's character and His attributes, but this name is very special because it is like His name. Like, your name is George, or your name is Elizabeth. You know, it's His special name. All these other names teach us His character and His attributes. So we're going to start to look at this name, and it's very important to learn this name before we begin to learn other names, because once we learn the name "Lord," then it's compounded in the Bible with lots of other names, like the Lord our righteousness, the Lord our peace, the Lord our shepherd. So once we learn "Lord," then He adds His character and attributes to who He is as a Lord. So we're going to start tonight and go to Genesis 2:4. Genesis 2:4. And we're going to look at the first time that this name is used in the Bible. So Genesis, chapter 2, verse 4. It says, "This is the account of the heavens and the earth when they were created, in the day that the Lord God made earth and heaven." And you will see "Lord" in your Bibles, probably in everybody's Bible. Do you have an uppercase L and then like a little smaller ORD in uppercase? Yeah, that's "Lord" in the Bible. And then you'll notice, right next to it, it says "God," which we know is Elohim. So that literally says, "When Yahweh Elohim made earth and heaven." So that's the first time that we see that name. If you flip over to Exodus, not Genesis, Exodus, let's go to Exodus 3:14. And this is when God begins to reveal to Moses, and he will reveal it to the people, what God's name is. So let's start at Exodus, chapter 3. Let's start at verse 13. It says, "Then Moses said to God, 'Behold, I am going to the sons of Israel, and I will say to them, The God of your fathers has sent me to you. Now they may say to me, What is his name? What shall I say to them?' God said to Moses, 'I am who I am.' And he said, Thus you shall say to the sons of Israel, 'I am has sent me to you.' God furthermore said to Moses, Thus you shall say to the sons of Israel, The Lord, the God of your fathers, the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac, and the God of Jacob, has sent me to you. This is my name forever, and this is my memorial name to all generations." So how clear does God make it here that this is His name? He makes it really clear, right? This is His name. And an interesting thing about this name, when you think of the Lord, you need to think of covenant and covenant relationships, because that's how God works and operates are through covenants. And the first time He uses this name is in the Garden of Eden with Adam and Eve, and they're in a covenant relationship there, and that's before it's spoiled by sin. And then the second time we see it used here is where God's entering a covenant relationship with a people who He's going to call His own people. So God's name of "Lord" shows us covenant. This is the most frequently used Name of God in the Bible. It's 6,823 times. So it's used the most, whereas we've seen Elroy's only used one time, but this one is the most-used name. But listen to this. It appears in every book in the Bible, but in Esther, Ecclesiastes, or Song of Songs. It's not in those three books. And they're mostly poetry and a story, so they're not in those books. It was used as early as Genesis 2:4. It's the memorial name of God forever. And as one writer said, "It's the name that is most closely linked to God's redeeming acts in the history of the chosen people." Because who were Adam and Eve in the garden? They were redeemed, right, without sin. Then when does he use that name again? When he's about to redeem a people for his own possession. So it's a name that's associated to redemption. It translates as "Lord" in the Old Testament. And here's a little lesson for you. I've already got it written up there, but Yahweh should be written as "Lord" with all uppercase. And then you will see in your Bible, "Lord," right here, "Lord," in the Old Testament as well as the New Testament, it's the Name of God Adonai, which we'll have to study later. And so this one means "I am who I am," the divine Name of God. This one, "Lord," means exactly what it means. It means "Lord," or "Master," or "Sir." So in the Bible, when people run to their masters, you know, they'll say, "Master." Well, if you look at it in the original language, it's "Adonai." So there are two different "Lords," and this really helps you a lot. Like, when you read Psalm 110, where it says, "The Lord says to my Lord..." Before I studied biblical languages, I thought, "Does God talk to Himself?" And He probably does. He's God, you know, He probably does. But that Psalm does not make sense unless you know the names of God. It's saying, "Then Yahweh said to the Lord." So it's the Father God talking to Jesus. So as you're reading through your Bible, look for which "Lord" is mentioned, and you'll understand more about what's going on. So this word of God is "Lord" in English in the Old Testament. Scholars really don't know how far back Yahweh was known before the time of Moses, because who wrote the first five books of the Bible? Moses did. And so when Moses is saying, "And the Lord said..." Moses knows that name, so he's using that name in the first five books, but we don't see Adam and Eve calling God "Lord." It's interesting. You'll notice that. So we're not sure how far this name was used before the time of Moses. It's interesting, though, because the Lord uses it talking about Himself. Go to Genesis 15. Genesis 15. Right before that, God has promised Abraham that he will have an heir that will come from his body, and he says in verse 5, "Now he," meaning the Lord, "took him outside and said, Now look toward the heavens and count the stars, if you are able to count them. And he said to him, So shall your descendants be." And then in verse 6, "Then he, Abraham, believed in the Lord..." Do you see that there? You could write in Yahweh. "...and he reckoned it to him as righteousness." In verse 7, he said to him, and this is the Lord talking to Abram, "I am the Lord who brought you out of the earth of the Chaldeans to give you this land to possess it." So we know that God said this to Abram, but before that, we don't know how far back that name was used. Turn to Genesis 28. "And he says it again to Jacob." In verse 13, 28:13, he says, "And behold, the Lord Yahweh stood above it and said, I am the Lord, the God of your father Abraham, and the God of Isaac, the land on which you lie, I will give to you and your descendants." So he says, "Yahweh stood above him and said, I am Elohim of your father." So you can always put all those names back in and remember what they mean, and it gives a lot more depth to it. It's also used as a name of address in the Bible. So turn to Genesis, chapter 14. Look at verse 22, where we've already studied this about El-Elyon, but look what Abram says in verse 22. "Abram said to the king of Sodom, I have sworn to the Lord, I have sworn to Yahweh, El-Elyon, God Most High, Possessor of heaven and earth." So by the time of Abram, they're using this first, this name. You see it in 15:2 as well. In 2, there's a little issue here. Do you see in verse 2, how many of your Bibles have "Lord" not in caps? Yeah, but if your Bible is like mine, it has a note. You look at the note, and it says, "It's rendered as Yahweh." So why it's in there as "Lord," I don't know, but it is literally, "Abram said, Oh Yahweh Elohim, what will you give me since I am childless?" So sometimes, there's a few rare spots where "Lord" will be rendered as "Adonai," and I'm going to talk about how that could happen in a few minutes. So it gets a little bit technical, but the awesome thing about most of our modern Bibles is they have all that footnoted for us, so that we know exactly what it is. We don't all have to be language scholars, which is good. And then go to Genesis 24. Genesis 24. Abram wants a wife for Isaac, and he says in verse 3, "And I will make you swear by Yahweh, the God, the Elohim of heaven and the Elohim of earth, that you shall not take a wife for my son from the daughters of the Canaanites among whom I live." So Abram is really understanding this divine Name of God and using it. And if we go back to Genesis 12, God made him the covenant promises. You know, this name is associated with covenant, that he would be a great name, that he would have a land, that he would have many descendants, and that in him, all the families of the earth would be blessed. So we see this name being used. And let's look at one last spot in Genesis. Let's go to 32. Okay, this is when Jacob's name gets changed to Israel in this chapter, but look in verse 9. It says, "Jacob said, Oh God, oh Elohim of my father Abraham, and God of my father Isaac, O Lord, who said to me, Return to your country and to your relatives, and I will prosper you." We see that Jacob is now using the Lord's proper divine name, Yahweh. So this is a title. It's like a proper name. It's used to address God. And Herman Bavinck, who's a scholar, has this quote. He says that Yahweh gives us not the etymology of a word, but the explanation of a name. Just as in a special revelation to Israel, God had taken over an assortment of religious practices: circumcision, Sabbath, sacrifice, priesthood. You know, in the ancient Near East, just about all the cultures practiced those things. But God took them over and gave them a special meaning, and He does that by showing them His name. So He shows them who He is, His proper name, and then He begins to outline, "This is how you're going to worship Me." So what is the origin of this name? Well, this can be a little bit confusing, and this is a little bit technical, but I know that y'all are brilliant enough to understand all of this. At some point, the ancient Israelites stopped vocalizing His name, the name Yahweh. I've got it right here in English, and here it is. Let me get my little marker. Here it is, right here in Hebrew, and I want to show you this for a reason. There's Yahweh in Hebrew. So they stopped vocalizing it because they considered it so sacred that they couldn't even say it. So they replaced saying "Yahweh" with "Adonai." They would say that instead. And so over time, they would read the word out loud, and instead where it said "Yahweh," they would replace it with "Adonai." And over time, the correct pronunciation of this word, "Yahweh," was lost. So we really don't know exactly how to pronounce it. And then, at some point, they decided, "Well, this is God's divine name. We really need to know this name, and we need to say it." But they still considered it too sacred to actually say. They weren't sure to how to pronounce it. So look at this. See where I circled that and that? Those two little... These are the consonants, and these are the vowels. So you read Hebrew from left to right and up and down, like that. Okay, so they took these, and look where they are. They added them over here under... That's Y-H-W-H. They added the vowels right there, so that it's put together, and they felt like they're not damaging the sacred name. So it's the combination of the letters from Yahweh and the vowels from Adonai, and now you can say "Yahweh." But we actually don't know what the real vowels are. I mean, it could be "Yee-hee." I don't know. You know, God knows. But it's a very sacred name. And they call this name the Tetragrammaton. You'll hear people talk about it. Kay Arthur talks about it, that Yahweh's the Tetragrammaton. Well, tetra means four. So the name only consists, as far as we know, of these four consonants. So they put the vowels from Adonai with Yahweh, and now we have a Name of God that we can say. Now, this gets even more interesting, because when I first learned all the names of God, guess what? Guess what I learned that this means, "The Lord"? Who did this to? I learned that "Lord" means Jehovah, right? When I teach, I really confuse people, because I flip back and forth. Guess what? This and this are the same word. Jehovah and Yahweh are the same exact word. They're just in two different languages. So Yahweh is in Hebrew, which is the original biblical language. Guess what this is? No? German. Why would the Name of God, the divine Name of God, be in German? And why do we all know Jehovah?
I don't know.
Well, I'm glad I showed up tonight. This is one of those things in seminary that drove me crazy. I would go to one of my professors and have these deep theological questions, and his answer would be several times, "Tracy, that ship has sailed." You know, and so I just had to live with whatever we believe now or how we do it. This is one of those things. When the Reformation started in 1517, before the Reformation, where did it come out of and who were all those people? German. And so all of the great Protestant literature is written in German. If you want to be a true scholar of the Bible, like, I took Greek, Aramaic, and Hebrew and thought I was doing great, and then I heard, "Well, you need to take German, because you need to be able to read all the original scholars' papers in German." Now, praise the Lord, you know, online now, so many of them are translated. But that's what the German, early church Protestant writers called God, and it stuck, just like things stick. I've tried to think of a name that's not right but has stuck with us. Can anybody think of anything? Maybe in your family or something? I don't know. I couldn't think of a good example. But what I do when I teach is usually when I have new classes, I tell them, "Okay, I don't want to confuse you, but on the names of God, I go back and forth between Yahweh and Jehovah, and so you're going to think I'm talking about two different people, but I'm not." And I do that. So each one is proper to say, but since I'm not German, I have really tried to train myself now to say "Yahweh," because that's His real divine proper name in the original language. But I still will be teaching away and say "Jehovah," and that's okay, too, because that's what the scholars wrote. So does that make sense? It's really "Yahovah." Yeah, "Yahovah" in German. Yeah. Yeah, it is. You're right. Yeah. We pronounce everything Southern. My friend Yuri is from Czech Republic, and he speaks about five languages. And we were both talking to someone at an event, talking about the Lord, and they said, "How many languages do you speak?" And he said, "I can't remember what he speaks. It's a bunch. I'm going to make it up, five." And I said, "Man, that is so awesome. I wish I could speak five languages." He goes, "You do." I said, "I speak..." "How many languages?" He goes, "You speak two. You speak English and you speak Southern." He goes, "Your Southern is excellent, but your English, not so good." And I've never thought about that. We do. We speak Southern down here. So, you know, I've been in churches where I've heard them say "Jehovah." They can get long syllables out of it, right? But don't get confused when you see writers or devotions or things that are out there that talk about Jehovah, or they talk about Yahweh, because it's the same name, just in two different languages. So I could be teaching, next week I'm going to teach "The Lord our Shepherd," and I might say "Yahweh ra'a," or I might say "Jehovah ra'a." I'm talking about the same person. But I went to Miles, and I said, "Look, we're not German. Like, we are trying to go back to the biblical languages. Why don't we just all say it like, you know, God wrote it?" And he goes, "Tracy, that ship has sailed." You know, and some things are like that. But I did want to explain that, because it can be very confusing. So we've got Yahweh or Jehovah, and then that word translates into the New Testament as well. So those are your Old Testament words, your New Testament words. When you see "Lord" in the New Testament, that's going to be "Adonai," which we just talked about. But "Lord" is "Theos," which, that's where we get the word "theology," isn't it? Because "Theo" means "God," so theology is the study of God. There's another Greek word, too, which is "Kurios." I almost wrote in Greek. All right. I don't know how to spell those things in English. Let me look. How do you spell it in English? Kurios. Okay. So "Lord" is translated into the New Testament as "Theos," or sometimes "Kurios." And "Kurios," you'll see, used as this "Lord" right here, too. And "Lordly" means "Master," so it's okay. This is Greek, yeah, New Testament. And what you'll find in the New Testament is they're constantly quoting the Old Testament, and you'll see that it's written like this in Old Testament passages where they're quoting... In the New Testament, where they're quoting the Old Testament, they'll write it correctly the Hebrew way.
So is that the reason that they can call lords and ladies?
Well, the literal meaning of the word is "Lord, Master, or Sir." So in regard to lords and ladies, yeah, they're the master over their estate or whatever, or they're, when they had hierarchies, they're the hierarchy. You will see in the Bible that servants run to say, you know, how many times did people run and say, you know, "My master needs this." Like, "My master's got to go..." That's what they're saying, is "My Lord needs this." So the literal meaning of it is "Lord, Master, or Sir." But this only has one meaning, because it is the proper Name of God, and we're getting ready to talk about that. This is the, let's say, for just sake of understanding, the abbreviation of the proper Name of God, which is, I wrote it right here. I'm going to write it backwards. "I am who I am." You see that? Right here. "I am who I am." So that's God's name. And He says, "And you can call me Lord." So "I am who I am." Let's talk about the meaning of that. This is a really technical lesson. This name, "I am who I am," comes from the Hebrew verb, and I've got to get my throat right to say it. "Haya." I can't really do that well, but, yeah. "Haya," if you don't roll it like you're in Hebrew. But "Haya" means "to be." So what he's literally saying is, and you don't need to remember this, but it's very specific. It's in the Hebrew text as "a cow imperfect, first-person singular," which translates into Hebrew, literally, "I will be who I will be." And we don't translate it that way in English, because English is different. If we say in English, "I will be who I will be," what does that infer possibly? That you might not be all you're going to be? You're working toward being all you're going to be? But it doesn't mean that in Hebrew syntax, in context in the language. So that's why it's not translated literally that way. And you will hear people get into arguments about, you know, the literal translation and things like that. And sometimes, that's a good argument. We need to know what the literal translation. But many times, the literal translation in Hebrew is not going to... There's not a one-to-one word correlation over into English. So if you want to get the meaning of the word, you have to alter some things so that it means the correct thing in that language. So for us, instead of "I will be who I will be," it's "I am who I am." And that tells exactly what we're trying to say in Hebrew. "I am who I am." God has always been who He will be. He always has been, He always will be. So that's why there's a little difference there. And this is another Hebrew lesson, but it's interesting, I think. Okay, the meaning of this cow imperfect tense in Hebrew... Okay, the meaning of this cow imperfect tense in Hebrew? Listen to this. The imperfect tense is used to express an incomplete action. Think about that, incomplete. Its aspect denotes incomplete action, whether in the past, present, or future. So if that's God's name, what does that say about Him? He never ends. Yeah, he's infinite. He never ends. It's never completed. He always and forever is God. So this is one of the reasons I love languages. And so the early church fathers wrote a lot about this, and they wrote a lot about it. And one of the things they said, that this name of God reveals God's ascity, which is a big theological word. But it means that it refers to the property by which a being exists in and of itself, from itself, or exists as so and such of itself. In other words, it exists by itself. And we don't, right? We're created by God. God planned us up. God taught us up. But God always has been. I love when little children ask me, you know, when did God begin? You can't answer that question, can you? He always has been. He always will be. And have you ever thought about when you get to heaven that, you know, you want to ask God all these questions? Like, where'd you come from or whatever? Sometimes I think when we get there and His presence will be so in all, we won't even care about those questions anymore, right? I don't know. But maybe He does answer those questions. But He always has been. He always will be. And I love how Herman Bavinck sums this up. He says, speaking of Yahweh, "He is who who is the same yesterday and today and forever." What verse is that? Does that sound familiar? Hebrews 13:8. Jesus Christ is the same today, yesterday, and yes, forever. Yahweh, the God of your fathers, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, sends Moses, and that is his name forever. God does not simply call Himself the one who is and offer no explanation of His ascity, no explanation of His existence, but states expressly what and how He is. Then how and what will He be? And this is the best part of this. That is not something that you can say in a word or to describe in an additional phrase. But He will be what He will be. This sums up everything. He will be everything to and for His people. That's beautiful, isn't it? So when you think of God as Yahweh, you've got a Father with this divine name who's going to be everything to and for His people. A covenant promise, a name of God. So what does this name mean to God's people? Well, it means several things. His proper name, His divine name, indicates a covenant relationship. And God does not break covenants, does He? We're the covenant breakers. We break our promises. The biblical definition of a covenant is a solid binding agreement. It's sealed in blood. And that's what God demonstrated from Genesis 15 onward through Jesus. So He is not going to break His covenant. He is the one whose name is, I am who I am. And it's abbreviated to Yahweh for us. And I'm going to tell you something. This is probably one of the shortest lessons I'll ever teach, but this one took the most work. Because I got, along with others, so confused about, is Yahweh His name or is I will be who I'll be? Which, you know, I actually had to go get tutoring with one of my professors because I had kind of been taught a little incorrectly. And so I had to sit down. And I remember one of my professors was good enough to come to our restaurant, and we sat down for hours with books all over the table. And he tutored me on that, and I made sure I got it right because you want to get the divine name of God right. You want to know that. So our God's name is Yahweh. That is the name that is defined as I will be who I will be. But all of His other names, like we've studied Elohim, Creator, El Yon, God Most High, El Roy, the God who sees, Bened, El Shaddai, the God Almighty, those all describe His character and His attributes, whereas this name is just His divine name. So it's beautiful. So because He is Yahweh, let's look at what that name means in relationship to covenant. So let's go to Exodus, chapter three. Back to Exodus. Chapter three. We know that Moses met the angel of the Lord in a burning bush. And he called to Moses. And look at verse six. This particular angel of the Lord is a theophany, a pre-incarnate appearance of Jesus because he says in verse six, I am the God of your fathers. And an angel wouldn't have the right to say that, would they? So Moses is talking with God. And he says in verse seven, "I have surely seen the affliction of my people who are in Egypt and have given heed to their cry because of their taskmasters, and I am aware of their sufferings. So I have come down to deliver them from the power of the Egyptians and to bring them up from a land to a good and spacious land, a land flowing with milk and honey to the place of all those people." And so God is coming in Exodus, chapter three, to deliver His people. So the name of Yahweh is a name of deliverance, right? We talked about it of redemption and deliverance. He is the Deliverer of His people. So now, let's go to Psalm 103. Psalm 103. This is a Psalm of David. It starts out in verse one, saying, "Bless the Lord, O my soul, and all that is within me bless His holy name." And what would that name be? Yahweh, right? "Bless the Lord, bless Yahweh, O my soul, and forget none of His benefits; He who pardons all your iniquities, who heals all your diseases..." And look at verse four. "...who redeems your life from the pit, who crowns you with loving kindness and compassion, who satisfies your years with good things so that your youth is renewed like the eagle." And it goes on to say in verse six that Yahweh performs righteous deeds and judgments for all who are oppressed. Look at verse eight. Yahweh is compassionate and gracious, slow to anger, and abounding in loving kindness. And look at verse 12. "As far as the east is from the west, so far has He removed our transgressions or our sins from us." It says that He has compassion on us like children. So the God who is the divine One is the one who delivers us, who loves us, who heals us, who forgives our sins. Isn't that beautiful? That He would do that for us? In Greek... I'm running out of room here. I'll write it over here. I'm sure y'all have heard this before. Ego emi. In Greek, that's how it's translated as I am. And you see Jesus use this. Ego is like, we call it ego. So ego emi is that is I am. So that is the Greek translation of I am who I am is the ego emi. And let's look at who says that. Let's go to John, chapter eight. John, chapter eight. And when you start understanding what these names mean, then this makes a lot of sense. Look at John, chapter eight, verse 24. Jesus is talking, and he says, "Therefore I say to you that you will die in your sins; for unless you believe that I am, you will die in your sins." How many of your Bibles have a He there? Did it add a He? And is it in italics? A lot of them put it in italics. There's actually not a He there. It's rendered there in English to help us understand better. But what it really is, is the name of God. So if you want to read it as it was intentionally written, you know, "Therefore I say to you that you will die in your sins; for unless you believe that I am, you will die in your sins." So who is Jesus saying He is? That one, right? Okay, and look what happens when He keeps saying that. Look at verse 28. So Jesus said, "When you lift up the Son of Man, then you will know that I am; and I do nothing on my own initiative, but I speak the things as the Father have taught me." So he said he was I am again. And then go to verse 58. "Jesus said to them, 'Truly, truly, I say to you: before Abraham was born, I am.'" And look what happens in 59. "Therefore they picked up stones to throw at him; but Jesus hid himself and went out of the temple." Those Jewish people understood who He was saying He was. When He was saying I am, He's saying, I am Yahweh. I am the Lord. And what did they want to do? They wanted to kill Him because that was blasphemy to them. But He was the true God, and He told them flat out. I love Jesus because He doesn't beat around the bush, does He? He tells them flat out who He is, I am. So that's what He was telling them right there, which is the same as that in Hebrew. And then His name, Jesus, is a form of Joshua. In Hebrew, it's Joshua. He's got His name of Jesus, and it means that Yahweh saves. That's the literal meaning of His name. Jesus means Yahweh saves. So what does it say in Hebrews 13:8? Jesus Christ is the same yesterday, today, and forever. In John 14:6, what did Jesus say? I love the I am statements of Jesus. They're very powerful. He says, "I am the way, the truth, and the life; and no one comes to the Father but through Me." The only way to get in the presence of the Lord is through Jesus, our Savior. And then let's finish going to look at Colossians, chapter two. Flip over to Colossians, chapter two. Colossians, chapter two. I'm going to start at verse eight. There's a very good warning here, starting at verse eight. "See to it that no one takes you captive through philosophy and empty deception, according to the tradition of men, according to the elementary principles of the world, rather than according to Christ; for in Him, in Jesus, all the fullness of deity dwells in bodily form; and in Him you have been made complete, and He is head over all rule and authority." Jesus is Yahweh. He's equal with the Father. He's the Son of the Father and contains every aspect of who God is, except He got a body and He got to come to earth. John 4 tells us that the Lord, God, is Spirit, and that we worship Him in spirit and truth. So the only one of the Trinity that gets a real body and gets to come be with us is Jesus. Isn't that amazing? Okay, I have thrown a lot at you tonight. Like I said, I had to have tutoring to get all this straightened out in my head. Have I made any sense tonight? Good. I hope I've explained this well. So when you think of the Lord, when you see the Lord in your Bible, your brain needs to instantly go to Yahweh, the divine name of God. And if you think Jehovah, you're not in trouble either. You're just maybe a little bit German.[1548.14][1548.17](Laughter). Any thoughts or questions about this?
You know, it occurred to me when you said that we really don't know how to pronounce Yahweh, that it's still a mystery.
Mm-hmm.
It's still not spoken.
Yes.
Because we really don't know.
Yes. Yeah, we don't. We're doing the best we can. They did the best they can to put, you know, this Lord, master, sir, together with that. And I do think that's very respectful and God honoring. They did it the best way that they could. But you will even find now, like I follow a couple of Hebrew scholars. I get my, like, daily dose of Hebrew. I get these little emails and somebody does a verse. And they are actual Jewish people. And they will, when they're reading a verse, they will, instead of saying Yahweh, they will say Adonai. When it's clearly written Yahweh there, they will not say it. Still won't. A lot of them, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's another thing, wonderful, get to know when we get to heaven, like, what's the real name? What are the real vowels? Any other thoughts or comments? Okay. Well, next week, we're going to spend two weeks doing The Lord is My Shepherd. And I'm going to tell you something. It is brilliant. It is funny. Do you want to know how you're like sheep? It is going to be good. It's a good... It's going to take us two weeks to study that. There's a lot to study. But it is, well, I love all the names of God, but it really speaks to us as humans when we find out why we need a shepherd. Because why did God use sheep and people to compare? So... Well, you know what? They used to think that they're stupid, but they found in modern research that they are actually quite smart, which to me preaches even better. Because years ago, when I learned about sheep needing a shepherd and how stupid they are, I thought, but we're made in the image of God. You know, we shouldn't be going around calling ourselves stupid. That's a bad word, you know? But now that we found out they're smart, it's even funnier why we're called sheep. So look forward to that and do that lesson in your book if you want to. All right. Any last thoughts? It's... Which page was that, Diane? It's The Lord My Shepherd, I think.
Page 139.
Okay. And I have one book left. If anybody's interested in getting a book, I have one left. All right. Well, let's close in prayer. Oh, most holy, gracious, heavenly Father, we just bow in awe of who You are. You even share Your divine name with us. You are, I am, I am who I am. And You tell us that we can call You Yahweh. You speak to us, Lord God, and You reveal plans for us. You're our Deliverer. You forgive our sins. You heap grace, mercy, and compassion on us. And Lord, to think that the awesome God, the awesome Yahweh, does that for us is just mind-blowing. Help us to be ever mindful of You and not take You for granted. It's easy to do, Lord, when we get wrapped up in all the things that are going on in life. But Lord God, just help us every day to pour out our hearts and minds to You and remember that You are the divine One, the holy One, and that You know us and You love us. We praise You and we thank You for that. And we ask this in the most holy name of Jesus. Amen.